Good evening. Welcome to the Kennebunk Select Board Meeting of October 8th. Meeting has started. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Oops, thank you. All righty, we don't have Bill yet. We will start with the consent agenda, which includes approving the minutes from the August 27 meeting, which were amended, the special meeting of September 24th, the regular meeting of September 24th, and approving the following items for November 5th, 2024 election. Also approving the town clerk's appointment of Sandra Nogenko as warden, approving the location and hours for voting, approving the additional hours for voter registration, and absentee balloting, all of which are on your agenda.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second? Okay, all in favor? Six, zero, one. We have no items to be signed. Item four is public hearings. I'm going to open a public hearing on the municipal officers of the town of Kennebunk. To hold a public hearing, to hear a public comment on the following: fiscal year 2022-23 unexpendable balances carry forward to fiscal year 2023-24 and assigned funds. Kayla, are you here? She's going to present to us. And the material is also available in the town clerk's office.
Kayla Tierney, Finance Director. So this is similar to the last meeting. So this is carrying forward the unexpendable amounts from the 22-23 fiscal year into the 23-24. So that would put it July 1, '23, the start of '24, and that would carry it into the assigned fund balances on the balance sheet.
Anybody? No? Okay, thanks.
I will make a motion to carry forward fund balances remaining in accounts with unexpendable balances from fiscal year 22-23 to fiscal year 23-24.
Second? All right, all in favor? Six, zero, one. All right, we're going to close that public hearing and go to item five, public comments for items not on the agenda. Do you have any public wants to speak? Go ahead. And you need to state your name and your residence.
My name is Richard Baumann.
Oops, press the button.
My name is Richard Baumann. I live at 164 Port Road in Kennebunk, Maine. Wow, the time's going quickly. All right, so I'm just going to throw it all on the line. I'm a Philadelphian, born and raised properly, Cub Scouts, religious family, church morals, values, personal friends with Rocky and Adrian Balboa, of course, until Adrian passed away. I've been the live-in caretaker for a now 84-year-old woman with Parkinson's disease for six years and one month, living day-to-day financially, can certainly be a nightmare, certainly at 56. And when you live, by the way, this community is wonderful, absolutely wonderful. The folks that do the work here, the highways, the police officers, Officer Fontana, all of the law enforcement officials, well, I actually get to leave and go watch Entertainment Tonight and Inside Edition. They're wonderful. It's been a truly amazing experience in this community. I'm proud to say that it took Richard "Rudder" Baumann from Philadelphia to bring Bonnie and Helen Clement at H&amp;B Provisions, who had stolen from women and teenagers, exchange students, locals. I was the one, if you Google, I was the one that contacted Officer Juan Herrera and got all the information together from how they refused and cheated people from overtime teenagers. Bonnie and Helen Clement, thank goodness, they left this community. They were truly the scourge of Kennebunk. Anybody that knows them would know. I have a pedigree of standing up for morals and rights and decency and honor and integrity, and this is the crux of the thing. I've been here six years and one month, and what would bring me out here is the fact that we have rich people at Parsons Beach who have been grandfather clause. Their family bought that land when it was like $20 an acre for a horse. And if you Google the information, even for our young children, because there is entitlement, some people with money think they're better than you. They're not better than you. Like my mom used to say, "You're not better than anybody, and nobody is better than you." So the guy that got a restraining order at 50 Parsons Beach Road, I'm not going to say his name, although I could, the fact that seeing a human being walking on the sand that God created, God created the sky, God created the ocean, God created the air, God created the sand that I was walking on, and I'm giving a very respectful rendition that, and this is a fact, and you girls should take self-defense courses, women are sometimes hurt. It's called rape. People are murdered. Bad things happen, and that's when you call 911. I grew up in Philadelphia where bad things happen, a car accident, somebody is bleeding to death. That's when you call 911. The fact that I would be walking on the beach at, not Parsons Beach, they've got a false sense of entitlement because they're rich. I made $37,000 last year, and I live day-to-day. And the fact that they just were born into such wealth, and they rent their properties, and they would think that they have the right to abuse our wonderful law enforcement officials because they see human, and it's not just me. Another lady told me the other day that this old man, this skinny old man with the white hair, he was menacing her with a garden rake. This has been going on for decades. These Parsons people think they own everything. They don't. So you kids, just know, your parents that are hardworking, whether they're rich and they've got all the expensive toys, or whether they're just struggling getting by, we're all equal. And these Parsons people that would think that they could call 911 to manipulate and abuse law enforcement, but it's wrong. It's morally wrong. They ought to be ashamed of themselves, the entire family. I'm grateful to all of you. Oh, I'm going to take this to the last second. You know something? I feel like I'm at an Academy Awards ceremony. My mom was right, I should have been an attorney. My deceased wife was right. I'm a drama king and a drama queen. Go Flyers!
Do we have any other regular public comment?
Oh, and I was forced to get this to protect myself. When I'm at the beach and I fear for my life that he might assault me, and I take my whistle.
What's that?
Martha?
Yes. Ethel and Martha was the town clerk of Kennebunk from 1985 to 2006, for 21 years. She was an outstanding clerk and was admired by all. In 2005, a park on Gooch's Beach was created in her honor and dedicated to her from the residents of Kennebunk. The park has two granite benches and a plaque with her name on it. During the January storm, the park received damage. The plaque was found dislodged from the granite it was attached to, and later was found on the beach by one of Kennebunk's best friends, Linda Johnson. She brought the plaque to me. Doug Bibber came in, got the plaque, and whispered off for repair and returned it to me at no cost to the town. Last week, Public Works Department reattached the plaque. On behalf of the residents, I want to thank the Bibber family, thank Linda Johnson for finding the plaque, and thanking Public Works Department for bringing the Ethel and Martha plaque and enabling Ethel's memory to be memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the Bibbers. Okay. Acknowledgements and announcements. We have staff news. We are pleased to announce Kate DeValle will be returning to Kennebunk as a police officer on September 30th, so he's back. Welcome back, Officer DeValle. Seven-time Sensitive Business and Staff Presentations. We have Kayla coming back up to give us a summary on Kennebunk's Property Tax Assistance Program. The town's Property Tax Assistance Program ordinance was established to provide property tax assistance to persons 62 years of age and over who reside in the town of Kennebunk. So Kayla, you can fill us in on the rest of it.
Thank you. Kayla Tierney, Finance Director. So this year, there were 25 applicants, and 24 of them qualified for assistance ranging from $83.50 to $300. So just as a reminder of the ordinance itself, in compliance with the ordinance, the applicants have to apply to the State of Maine Property Tax Fairness Credit Program, and then they have to show the proof of that acceptance, and the town's assistance is the lesser of 25% of the amount of the refund awarded through the State of Maine through the Property Tax Fairness Credit Program, or $300. So the total amount of assistance granted for fiscal year 24-25 real estate property taxes was $5,825.75. It is showing a decline in applicants from last year. So last year, there was 38, and this year, there were 24. It seems to kind of be in flux, where the lowest dip we saw as a result of COVID, and we saw it come back up from that. Just kind of a note that, on average, we're seeing about 27 applicants, and that we continue to look at the ordinance and to see how else we can improve, and that will be brought forward, and it's part of the budget process. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
Kayla, have you explored any possibilities of doing some outreach to the community about this particular program? For instance, an announcement on, you know, one of the monthly newsletters or something like that?
Yes, that's a great question. So we do our best to do as much communication as we can. So the program itself, you have to apply to the State of Maine's Property Tax Fairness Credit Program, and that you use your current year's tax returns for, and they have all their other eligibility that they verify. For the town's tax assistance, that currently is due July 1st. So the other stipulation in this is you have to have a homestead in the town, so that gets verified on the state level. And just also kind of to note that the assessed owners are assessed as of April 1st annually, and per the program, you have to have that homestead for 12 consecutive months. So now that this has been applied to the first installment of the 2024-2025 fiscal year taxes, we'll start to kind of convene, and we will look at, ahead to budget season, and we will start that communication and advertising again as we get towards that spring point, so people are aware that they'll have to have their tax returns completed timely, and that that July 1st deadline is ahead of us. So we'll see more of that advertising in the spring.
Thank you. Kayla, is it true, I don't know how to phrase it, is the state planning on raising the cap, the income cap, for making people eligible for that relief?
So the state had a stabilization tax program that has since been repealed, and as a result of that, the state has looked at their other assistance programs under Title 36 of the MRSA Tax Code. For the assistance, there are two. There's a deferral program, and then there's a tax fairness credit program. So there has been talks of enhancing the deferral program. As far as the tax fairness credit program, the cap right now is, if you're 65 and older, that's a $1,500 cap, and if you're under, if you're between 62 and 65, that's a $1,000. I haven't heard of any updates to that, other than the updates that are being brought down on the deferral program, but I continually look at this and will share if I do note any.
No, I think what I was asking was, I believe there's an income max. If you're over that, you don't qualify for the assistance. Have they upped that amount? That's what I was asking.
Not that I'm aware of, and the state does vet all of that eligibility.
Okay, thank you. I thought they might have, because of the repeal of the freeze.
I think that was on the deferral side, but I can go back and take a look, and if so, I can report back.
Right. I was thinking more in line of that if you're going to do an outreach to tell people about this program, to keep people up to date on any changes on the state level.
Certainly.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the public questions? Okay, thank you. All right, come to the big event of the night. Discuss Summer, whoops, yep, Discuss Summer Street Halloween event. So I just want to note that in order, obviously, we have a lot of people here, in order to allow everyone to have a chance to speak, I'm going to ask that speakers who spoke at our last meeting may speak again, but please don't repeat what you said last time. If you have something new to add, that's great, but just in terms of saving time, that would be helpful. And also, if someone who has spoken before you has said something that you intended to say, you don't need to repeat it, just say, "I agree with the previous speaker," and then add your own additional comments. So with that, we'll open it up.
Good evening. My name is Walter Olhovik. I live at 25 Summer Street, and I'm here this evening to ask that you direct the town of Kennebunk to close Summer Street from Portland Road Main Street to Depot Road from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Halloween. I make this request to you this evening for three important reasons. Number one, safety. Number two, safety. Number three, safety, and I'm talking about the safety of our children. Let me give you some important facts. The asphalt sidewalk on Summer Street measures 56 inches wide. It's in poor condition. It's a challenge to walk that sidewalk in the daytime, let alone at pitch dark. Now multiply that by approximately 3,000 kids, and let's add in another 800 to 900 parents. What are these kids wearing that evening? Oversized costumes. And what's the predominant color that evening? Black, you guessed it. To compound that situation even further, we've got carriages, we've got strollers, and we've got wagons coming down that sidewalk. And invariably, the lines back up. Where do you think the overflow naturally goes? Unfortunately, to the street. And as you know, we've got trick-or-treating on both sides of Summer Street. If you wonder what the situation looks like, all you need to do is ask Kennebunk's finest, the Police Department and Fire Department, and they will tell you what that evening looks like. Now put yourself in this position. Imagine yourself being a driver, coming down, trying to navigate through that situation in pitch dark, and all of a sudden, some young child runs out in front of the car, the person hits the child, the child is severely injured, or heaven forbid, worse yet, killed. Can you imagine having that on the driver's conscience for the rest of their life? I wouldn't want it on my conscience. And you, as decision-makers here this evening, I'm sure, I'm sure none of you would want it on your conscience. There are some questions about this whole evening, this event, that we need answers to, and one of the questions regards the permit that was apparently has been issued to the Chamber of Commerce for another event on that same day/evening. The question I have, and hopefully somebody knows the answer, is did the chamber secure the permit on their own, or did someone in the town secure the permit on behalf of the chamber? If so, who was that person, and why would that person make a decision that favored one private entity over another private entity, especially when the second private entity has a history of 10 to 12 years of having Summer Street closed? Who made that decision? You know, the residents on Summer Street gladly sacrifice each and every year for the most fun event that Kennebunk has, and I'm talking about, the average person is putting about $700 to $800, and I know one person, for a fact, that's putting out $1,500, and that's candy only. That's not to mention the decorations. Matter of fact, my situation, my wife and I, we've got three couples coming from out of town to assist us to make sure that everything is successful on that evening. You know one thing, these kids that are trick-or-treating, they're going to come, they're going to go, they're going to grow up, and they're going to leave. But they're going to tell their children, and they're going to tell their grandchildren, you know, Halloween, what a festive event it is. But you don't know what Halloween was like in Kennebunk, Maine, where I was from, because it was the greatest highlight of our childhood. Well, I just want to tell you, I want you this evening to exert your leadership, and please, 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 do the right thing. Keep the fun in Halloween, keep the safety in Halloween, and direct the town to close Summer Street. Thank you for your attention.
Can I ask a point of order? I guess I was hoping that we would hear a presentation from the town about their reasonings for the change of the event, hear from some of the staff about why we came to this decision, and then give us an opportunity to then respond to some of those new comments. That's kind of how I thought this might go. Is that usually how it works?
Could I start? Thanks for everyone for showing up tonight. We really appreciate you being here. And yeah, I'll just go over a few points that we had some memo attached and some information about what the evening would look like based on staff's recommendation. So I'd just like to say, we recognize that Halloween on Summer Street has become a cherished tradition for many in our community. It's a vibrant event that brings together families, friends, and neighbors, and we really value that spirit and joy. However, our top priority is the safety of everyone involved, including residents, visitors, and motorists. Over the years, we've seen the event grow, which has created some challenges. We want to ensure that while we enjoy Halloween, we also keep everyone safe. Currently, the event is not officially organized by any one group or individual, which means it lacks formal planning and oversight. This makes it difficult to manage safety effectively, as there are no permits or insurance coverage associated with the event. In previous years, our emergency services have had to close roads to ensure the safety of pedestrians, and we have seen some challenges with managing vehicle access. Some of the residents on Summer Street have raised concerns about road closures and the impact on access to homes. As crowds grow, managing such a large gathering with limited staff and resources also stretches our capabilities, which affects the ability to respond to emergencies elsewhere in town. So to address these concerns and find a balance, staff recommended the town keep Summer Street open to traffic this Halloween. People will be able to trick-or-treat on Summer Street, and the difference will be the road would remain open. However, we have developed a traffic management plan that includes using physical barriers, traffic control devices, and visual signals to enhance safety for both pedestrians and vehicles. We'll also reduce the speed limit in the area and deploy emergency vehicles to ensure a safe environment. In the coming weeks, we will plan to provide additional updates through the town website, social media, and message boards to ensure that residents and visitors alike know what to expect. Our goal is to create a safe and enjoyable Halloween experience for everyone. We're committed to working with the community to balance the excitement of the event with the necessary safety precautions. So that's kind of just a summary of what was in the previous information, and if others want to provide comments, or we can wait if you have specific questions. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Chief McKenzie and Chief Cooper to just add some comments about their concerns and point out that, you know, when Heather says "staff," she's not just talking about Town Hall staff, she's talking about Police Department, Fire Department. And it was these groups, along with the chamber, who came to her to ask for help on this. This wasn't a town manager-based decision. She was asked to address the problem. So, and these are some of the reasons.
Yeah, certainly. So we've obviously seen this event grow a lot over the years since it started. Yes, the road was closed down due to safety. As time went on, especially, you know, last year, we came to the realization, we are going to have to do something different. And then when it was brought forth to our attention that there were some concerns from citizens on Summer Street, to address it, we felt that we need to look at it and do something differently. A, if we continue to close the road, we don't see how it's not going to continue to grow. It does cause problems in other areas of town adjacent to Summer Street, and we don't have the staff that can address. And we don't have the staff that can address that currently. So, you know, if we were to open the road but yet have a safety plan in place, our hope that it would disperse the kids throughout town, more so like it used to be. Years ago, I grew up here, and I used to trick-or-treat all over town. And nowadays, you don't see that anymore. Where I used to live on Malsum Ridge, we went from having about 125 kids a night down to a dozen when Summer Street gained its popularity. We've heard that from some residents with their concerns on that. Getting back to, you know, the issue that Summer Street continues to grow because it does get media attention. We've had the broadcast stations down here reporting live from Halloween, which, in one respect, is great. On the other hand, people see this from all over the state and want to come here. Again, is that a bad thing? Well, it's difficult for public safety to manage and continue to manage if it continues to grow. So I look at this, we're getting to the point where it's almost getting towards, like Prelude, with the crowds that we see at Prelude, and managing that offense. There's a lot of time, effort, and staffing that goes into that. There's a lot more behind the scenes that the general public wouldn't even know about. They don't see. And if this continues, this is what we're gonna have to plan for. It is gonna be a budget implication for us. We are going to have to staff up. And you'll see that in the coming budgets. So this was an attempt to, you know, say, make everybody happy. Keep Summer Street open for trick-or-treating, but make it safe while keeping traffic flowing and try to disperse those crowds throughout town and not just concentrate in one area.
Thank you.
Good evening. Justin Cooper, Fire Chief. I obviously echo a lot of the sentiment that Chief McKenzie just spoke on. Again, you know, the town was reached out to by several of the Summer Street residents as they felt it was no longer sustainable. This has been on our radar for public safety for several years as well. And again, I think the goal was trying to bring the event back to a more normalized nature where it doesn't attract, again, as Chief McKenzie said, from all over the state, but honestly, from our surrounding states as well. And make this more of a local event again that many of the people in this room that have spent many years in this town, grew up in this town, enjoyed as a local event. Our staff, as well as the police department staff, find themselves stretched extremely thin with the increasing number of public events that occur in the town. Again, that's a wonderful benefit of living in this town with how active the community is, with how many events that we do have. But as the police department and the fire department are experiencing increasing call volume and demands every year, as these events increase even more as well, our employees find themselves being forced to work overtime for all of these different details. It's not like it was when I started 26 years ago, and our call volume was a fifth of what it was, and many of our members would be able to volunteer to do a handful of details per year. But now, it's dozens and dozens of details that require forced overtime. And that leads to issues with our employees for retention as well and their overall happiness. All of these events require, could be a half a dozen to a dozen, planning meetings to actually make these work appropriately. From the fire department perspective, anytime we close down a road like that and we have upwards of 6,000 to 8,000 people in that area, should there be an emergency within that area, it is extremely difficult for us to then gain access to that area. So again, there's all sorts of added decorations and other things going on. Should there be a fire in one of those extremely large buildings on Summer Street, it would be extremely difficult for us to get our 50,000 to 70,000-pound vehicles down that road with that many people there and be able to get there in time to make a difference. The same thing goes for medical emergencies or other events. So again, as we, as the town, looked at this, we looked at it in a way that we could make this become more normal, put safety features in place to allow the road to be open, but with features that would allow pedestrians to still be able to enjoy this event safely and allow us as public safety to have appropriate access to those areas. So thank you.
This on? Yep. One more thing I wanted to add is, you know, for years, there's been nobody in charge of this event. You know, we've been asked to close the road down, we did. But typically, if it's a private, you know, request that goes through the special event process, you know, then there are people responsible for that. There is liability insurance that's attached to that. There's somebody that pays for the officer's time, the staff time for fire rescue and whatnot. Somebody wants a neighborhood block party. They want to close the road down. They have to do the special event application. They take responsibility and the liability, and they pay for that. This is not, has not been a town-sponsored event. And it has, I say, it's been kicked down the road for years, and nobody's tackled it. So this is a good conversation to have, as hard as, as painful it is, and I understand from the public's perspective, but it has to be had. We have to have this conversation and figure out once and for all what we're gonna do. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
This is a follow-up to those statements. I just had a couple of questions. If I was short-sighted and I didn't think about future years, just 20 days from now or 21 days from now, what is the safest alternative that we have in front of us? Is it to close the street? Or is it to put this in place to mitigate long-term? I guess that's my question. And, you know, then I guess the second part would be, what is the risk to the long-term if we think short-sighted and just close the street?
I'll make sure I understand your first question there. If you're short-sighted and not thinking more than 21 days, what's the safest?
Right. So what's the safest in Halloween this year? If we don't think about anything else but just this year, what's the safest solution? And then, secondly, if you could then afterwards go, well, what's the risk to the long-term if it's a different choice?
Okay. So I would say, I mean, there's different things. Safety this year, if you close the road down, obviously, we most likely don't have to worry about anybody getting run over right in that area there. It does spill over into other areas of town where we're gonna have to put resources in different areas to make sure that's safe, because frankly, Park Street, Winter Street, Grove Street, a lot of traffic, a lot of parked cars, a lot of foot traffic, and there's no oversight down there whatsoever. Going long-term with the safety, I look at it all as it's pre-planning. It's, again, if we close the road this year and look beyond this year, it's all about planning and what goes on behind the scenes. Obviously, we have a lot of time to plan and make it even safer, whether it's open or closed. But it all comes down to resources and funds.
Chief, just one quick question. There's been reports that, like, Shoppers Village, St. Martha's Church are all completely full during Summer Street night. And how would any of you or your officers see that, which is now creating a secondary unsafe situation, because you, as you're saying, cannot patrol all these areas? So I think what we're hearing and understanding, as I see it, is, yes, Summer Street is a great event. I grew up here. I trick-or-treated on Summer Street. But I also trick-or-treated on every neighborhood that was not closed. And it was neighborhood kids, Kennebunk kids, enjoying all these streets. I'm struggling with the idea that we're telling all these other neighborhoods where there are still children, there are still people on Route 1 and Main Street and Brown Street and all these side neighborhoods that are dark with black colors, with cars racing to get to the next neighborhood. There's none of you that could get there fast enough because you're all focused on one road for people that are not even from here, truthfully. I mean, if it was what it was when we were growing up, it would be completely feasible to have people on Summer Street and then go to other neighborhoods. I just, is that the right statement? How would you even know what's going on anywhere else if all of our resources are on one road?
Correct. We do have our patrol officers that are out there as well, but they will get tied up. They have been tied up with a handling. The other calls to service that may be related to Summer Street, at least in the area of Summer Street, not in the detailed zone, but that would take away from our patrol. So once again, we would have to staff up to have extra patrol on. Literally, when I started here 36 years ago, for about the first 10 years, every officer was forced in to work overtime. That's full-time, part-time officers, because of what we had going on in town. And that was all over town. It was egging, toilet paper in the trees, criminal mischief and that stuff. And over the years, it's gotten much better here. People put hay bales and pumpkins on Main Street, they never get touched, right? When I grew up here, you couldn't find a whole pumpkin the day after Halloween, right? They were smashing the roads. We don't have that anymore, which is a testimony to, you know, our community. So we haven't had to staff up like we have years gone by, and our budgets have reflected that. But again, if we're gonna continue this, we do have to staff up, and there will be budget implications.
I just have a question about, one of the comments you made that I was hoping to hear a little bit more elaboration on was the issues that take place in the surrounding roads. You started to elaborate on it a little bit, but explain what, I mean, I'm hearing about resources having to be expended towards the surrounding roads. I think it would help everybody to get a better grip on that.
Sure thing. So prior to the details, we have to post no parking in certain areas of town. Again, most of them are off the side streets. And what I've heard the last few years is, and even this is even with Prelude, is people will go out, move the signs, throw the signs in the woods, and just park their cars there. The reason, you know, there's reasons we sign the areas is so cars don't park there. That does cause issues for us in trying to get emergency vehicles through and whatnot. So we do have to deal with that. We are gonna have to keep officers in those areas, just so that does not happen. And, you know, it's just the other associated minor calls to service that come in because of the amount of people that come.
One last question on the whole issue. That is, so all these parents want to bring their kids to Summer Street. We don't have any cars on Summer Street. They have to park somewhere.
Yeah.
Where are they all parking at? What kind of issues does that?
So Courtney alluded to it. We have cars parking down in Shoppers Village, St. Martha's Church and whatnot, and then we have, you know, people walking down Portland Road.
So basically, the risk hazard for the kids is also on Portland Road when they're walking from when they-
Certainly can be.
Yep.
I'm wondering if you could describe in a little more detail for the public, the proposed plan of lowering the speed, just explaining more about, and having the ability to walk on both sides of the street instead of just where the sidewalk is, just to explain more of that.
Chris, I'm gonna, you mind talking about that? Because you did develop the plan, which I think is great, but you'd do a better job describing that.
Not to put you on the sparkers.
Not at all.
Okay. Good evening. Chris Osterreiter. I think the question that was asked is, how will that corridor handle and balance pedestrians and vehicular traffic? I wrote a memo that tried to detail that and give an overview of it. But if you want to think about what Summer Street is, it's about as wide as this room, okay? When you think about the pavement width. And Summer Street itself has two 12-foot travel lanes, which is pretty typical for vehicle travel. And then the paved shoulders were dedicated as bike lanes in the late '90s. Now, that's an older standard, so that's why they're only four-foot bike lanes. But you basically have about 32 feet to work with. What we're looking at is if there was a situation where you were going to mix pedestrians and traffic, you have a high volume in excess of what that sidewalk can handle. We heard that tonight, I absolutely agree. So what we try to look at is say, if the road is open, can we accommodate all of this? What we do know is if you're gonna have traffic go down that road, it's gonna demand a certain amount of that cross-sectional area. Two cars traveling by each other, you're gonna need at least 20 feet, because we would separate it with channelizing devices and delineators and that type of thing. So when you think about a construction works zone and you drive by it, you're already scrunched down. So you're gonna steal 20 feet out of that 32 feet and give the rest of that space to the pedestrians. Is it perfect? No, it's not. It's certainly not what we designed. We would design based on capacity. What we're trying to say is, what can the corridor accommodate? So you can take some of that roadway corridor with a reduced speed limit, which would be very critical to this. You would add elements in there to make drivers feel very uncomfortable at a high rate of speed and give the pedestrians some travel space on both sides of the road where we know where they're going to be. We heard people say people trick-or-treat on both sides of the road, so it's not realistic expecting to just use the sidewalk. That's sort of what we're trying to say, is what would happen? It would change the user experience. Clearly, right now, with the road closed, everybody can do whatever they want. So what it would be is in a much more organized fashion, and all of those considerations we're looking at can change if people do stop or tie their shoe or do those different types of things. So it's really set up, just like a sidewalk is, you think about a sidewalk, people are moving. They're not stopping and congregating and, you know, enjoying themselves. So it is not an optimal situation, it's a manageable situation. So it would be a changed user experience. The one thing I'd like to say, and I think is really important to understand, is safety, I say this, it's a condition. It's a feeling. Who feels safe? How do you feel safe? And what contributes to that? If everybody isn't operating in the same environment, you're gonna have different levels of feeling of safety. That is not great. You think about what we do when we design things, we make user decisions minimized. So in an environment like this, this is a very atypical environment where the pedestrians are the dominant use, so to try to accommodate a lot is gonna be different. I think the biggest challenge with anything is you cannot forecast the number of people that will attend. We've heard people talk about where they come from, where they park, and all these types of things. That is a little bit different than other neighborhood events. So the level of planning that can go into this may be a lot. How it translates to what happened can be completely irrelevant. So to answer the question, pedestrians could be accommodated. How they feel, it's the same. It would be very different. I think it could be done in a safe manner. What we had identified doing is we would add some channelizing devices along the center line. So we would keep that double-yellow center line where it is, maybe 25 feet. We would put 42-inch-high double-reflective channelizing devices, like essentially enhanced cones. Offset, we would offset each side, have two 10-foot travel lanes. With that, you'd have some delineator posts. We would put those every 10 feet. You would be able to cordon that off either with rope or different things. We would gap those at driveways, recognizing the area would be hoping to be vehicular traffic. The intent of that would be accomplish two things. One, separate pedestrians from traffic, prevent crisscrossing of people through the road, let people know very intuitively where they're gonna go, increase the visibility with the devices, and also recognize you don't want that thing that used to happen, that everybody has a story when they're a kid, where my mom would drop me off, I got out of the car, and I ran into this place. So what you're really doing is you're looking at this thing and saying, pedestrians, you belong here, vehicles, you belong there. That's just a way to approach it from an operational basis. Is it gonna be the same? Absolutely not. But at some point, you have to look at this thing and say, what can you accommodate? I think I tried to give you some reasonable ranges of that. Those are all predicated on the fact that people are continuously moving. They're not standing still. They're not doing that. When you do that and you get backups, the conditions will change. So I think those assumptions are very subjective, and I think we have to be careful with that. But I do think you can organize something in a fashion. The biggest risk with that is it's not what people are used to. When you see something happen, you'll see, when a changing traffic pattern happens, you'll see new signs that go up, says new traffic pattern. They put those up about three weeks before that. You'll see changeable message boards. So the biggest risk you have is people would be asked to do something they're not used to doing. And their behavior should go back to something that is normal. We do walk on sidewalks, we don't walk in the road. We shouldn't. What we have to do is recognize people have to use those expected behaviors, which is a little bit different on Halloween, because nobody's doing that normal thing. So those are things you do have to think about, and I think you have to make sure you've got the buy-in from the people who are gonna go there. That's your biggest challenge, I'd say.
One more question for you. Can you just elaborate a little bit on the use of your officers if this change is made as opposed to the way you have to use them now?
We would have to have our cruisers set up, obviously, on either end of Summer Street here. Obviously, selling people, they have our lights on. We'd also have four officers spread out throughout the event to monitor, because we do have the ability, if we see that, you know what, there are far too many pedestrians here that we, you know, this is not safe, we can close the road down, we would be prepared to go back and resort to closing the road down like we have in the past. And we would also be looking for maybe some of our police volunteers to assist as well. There are gonna be some makeshift pedestrian crosswalks down there as well. So we'd be looking for volunteers to- So we'd have, we'd be looking for volunteers to, to take care of that and help people across the road, nowhere across the road. You know, extra lighting also would, we'd have down, down there and those warning signs prior to the event, well, prior to the event, kind of, you know, warning people of the change.
Thank you.
One question for anyone. Has anyone applied for a special events permit for Summer Street?
No.
No? Okay.
We all sit here. Okay. Back to the public.
How are you going to accommodate the stay stream of pedestrians and cars at the crosswalks? What are you going to do to make sure you don't avoid a traffic jam or a walking jam, I guess?
Thank you. So again, we are going to look to have those crosswalks, say manned, so we keep the flow going, plus obviously watching cars and make sure the cars, you know, see us and, and stop. As I said before, if, if we see an issue, if there's such a backup that we don't feel we can effectively, you know, monitor and keep people safe, then we'd be prepared to close the road down.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Ted Rosenthal. My wife Nadine and I live at thirty-nine Summer Street. Shortly again to be the spooky pirate house. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak here this evening. I confess that I have a hard time understanding why there is any debate as to the wisdom of closing Summer Street on Halloween. It has worked in the past, and it is not obvious what the problem is that is being addressed, even after the explanations tonight. To begin with, it should be by now clear that keeping Summer Street open on Halloween does not reflect the content, consensus view of the residents. Indeed, despite the press releases' reference to consultation with us and complaints from many of us, there was, to my knowledge, very little, if any, solicitation of our views by the town. This justification for opening the street remains, however, on the public record, often repeated in the press. This offends my wife and me, particularly the implication, apparently accepted by many, that we and most of our neighbors have become Halloween Scrooges. What then does the town's solution accomplish? For one thing, I find it hard to believe that the proposed alternative involving restricted traffic lanes and the like will absorb any less of the town's resources, or for that matter, permit more efficient flow of traffic through the area than barricading two ends of Summer Street. Further, I cannot imagine that keeping the street open will not make it more dangerous. Make no mistake, with a sidewalk only on one side of the street, fences and hedges along the curb on the other, no crosswalks and very little light, no amount of traffic cones can possibly make participation safe for even half the crowd from last year. The references to various alternatives to Summer Street trick-or-treating, as well as the erroneous statements suggesting our lack of enthusiasm, indicate a desire on someone's part to shrink trick-or-treating on our street. The increased hazards of cars in the street would seem to make it less pleasurable, at least for the chaperoning adults, and thus discourage attendance. I really struggle with the notion that town leadership should think it is in the town's best interests to discourage this tradition. To me, the town should instead be encouraging and supporting it. Halloween on Summer Street is one of the few things about Kennebunk that is truly distinctive. This is a delightful little town, but so are many other little New England towns. So much of what we are known for is derived from our neighbor across the river. I doubt I am the only person here who was told a non-mainor that he lives in Kennebunk only to hear, ah, where the bushes live. And prelude, a big event throughout the region is always then identified as a Kennebunk port one, but not Halloween on Summer Street. When we bought our house and heard about the Halloween tradition, I did some Google research. We were not yet full-time residents, but I wanted to get ready. What I learned from stories around the country was that apart from Salem and its witches, Kennebunk seemed to be the place to be on Halloween in New England, and this was ten years ago. Part of what makes this so special is the combination of the wonderful decorations and the beautiful, well-preserved historic houses serving as backdrops. Without that, the crowds may not have started to come, but I am convinced that what keeps everyone coming back is the fun, even the joy experienced by all participating. It must also feel like a safe choice for parents compared to alternatives, given that almost no residential streets around here have sidewalks on both sides with adequate street lighting, many have no sidewalks at all and are pitch black after sundown. And it is not realistic to think that a thousand kids or more will fit in the waterhouse. Why anyone should want to discourage this baffles me. It represents all that is good and wholesome about an event such as Halloween. Recently, representatives of the town have expressed concerns not reflected in any of the public statements. One example is the absence of a proper request for approval of a special event. I don't really understand this either. This is not an organized event. It's routine trick-or-treating without any real collaboration in advance among the neighbors, just with outsized crowds. And the apparent distinction between closing the street on Halloween for safety reasons, which seems to require us to make a filing, and substantially altering traffic patterns for the same event for the same reason, which does not require anything from us, eludes me. Again, I think Halloween on Summer Street is a town asset and should be encouraged. Perhaps there are things that can be done to alleviate some of the more legitimate concerns, including those expressed this evening. If so, I and I am certain some of my neighbors would be happy to work with the town to that end over the next year. But in the interim, please protect our children and keep the street closed this year. Thank you for letting me state my views.
I echo everything that my fellow residents have said. I have been a resident of Summer Street for over sixteen years and have participated in every one of those Halloweens. It was about ten years ago that the decision was made by the town to intentionally create this temporary event space that would build community identity, define some of the town's character and add safety. There's definitely multiple statements that the town still has out there. Obviously, the residents here are in a testament to our interest in continuing this event. We're not burdened by the event. It's not been weakened by additions or subtractions. We've only kind of grown, grown stronger with adding more and more people involved. The information that was presented to the town is not represented, representative of the overall neighborhood sentiment at all. The town also still quotes that the main DOT forced them to open the road, which is not true. Safety, agreeably, is everybody's top concern. Continuing to find, provide a fully pedestrian event creates a safe, free space, a space free from the dangers of adding vehicular traffic and drivers distracted by Halloween events, and thus is the safest scenario for the event. There's reference to the town feeling that the event is too big. Do you manage a bigger event with less resources unless you intend to make it feel less safe to intentionally try to decrease its size, which seems to be the undertone of the new safety plan? Honestly, it just doesn't make sense. The updated safety comments and plan reference sidewalks. We all know there's only one, poor condition, crosswalks, there's none. There are some on Portland Road. Hopefully, those are being utilized. The added cone or other barrier width is not taken into account in allowances and probably subtracts at least one to two feet from the pedestrian corridors, push in addition to the fact that that, that road width is quite variable with inclines of lawns and utility poles that are placed pretty closely to the street, creating bottlenecks in the area. Community. Community is defined in a number of ways, one of which is a group sharing a common experience, like trick-or-treating on Summer Street. That's a decades-long tradition that generation after generation has participated in. The road closure over the past ten years has solidified this as a core event in our community. Stripping away or diluting that, out that experience will weaken future connections to our town, our community and our traditions. Since the initial press release over a month ago, there seems to be a variable set of moving targets and expectations that we have been thrown to out to the Summer Street neighborhood. Get organized. Clearly, we have. Get a permit. We weren't really given a reasonable opportunity to meet with timing deadlines, sign off, and I still don't know that I have a clear answer of why it's needed now when it was exempt before and how we would have any idea about this change. It's not, it's not in the budget. We should have been notified about this months ago if that were true. The cost of the event would be included on previous budgets. Were those costs excluded this year? Why weren't we notified of that at that time? And one of the more troubling rebuffs, we were given the opportunity to address concerns in the past and declined. Who was notified and how and of what concerns? We've never been aware of any previous issues until August, online with everyone else. Why weren't we sent a notice in the mail about any of this? Years of Facebook posts have been singing our praises for doing a good job. Even the police department posted on November first of 2023, saying, "The Kennebunk Police Department would like to thank the residents of Summer Street for all their time, effort and patience in helping make last night's Halloween event a great success. We saw a lot of smiling faces. Thank you to all the trick-or-treaters for being safe and responsible. Thank you to Kennebunk Fire and Rescue and all the volunteer members for all of their assistance. We couldn't do it without you." Additional questions. What was the cost of this event in previous years? What is the estimated cost for the modified traffic setup and monitoring proposal for this year? Is there any cost to the town for the Waterhouse event? Again, when was that permit pulled and filed by who? The select board has been seemingly not included in any of these decisions leading up until now, and now is the time to act. We have elected you to direct our town, to oversee decisions, to shape the town's future and to define our community. Along with other things, trick-or-treating is not the same as it was ten years ago. Families are looking for a familiar and safe environment for their kids to be in. The town changed the standards of this event, not the residents. The town did not communicate it well, did not hold avenues for public input, or send notice to us or do due diligence in reaching out to the community.
That was five minutes.
It's up to the board to change this course. I request that you make a motion to keep the road closed and work with us to opening it or working with a better plan for the future.
As a resident of Summer Street, I ask the town of Kennebunk to close the street to cars on Halloween. In the past, Summer Street was a safe, car-free zone for trick-or-treaters, allowing families to enjoy the night without having to worry about traffic. But now the policy has been revoked, and many of us are concerned about the safety of children during Halloween. According to the U.S. Department of Transportation, pedestrian accidents go up on Halloween because there is more foot traffic and not enough safe spaces. Kids are especially at risk since they're excited and distracted while trick-or-treating. Closing the street again would help prevent accidents and ensure everyone would enjoy To, to get this point across, I have started a petition which has over two hundred and sixty-five supporters, including many Summer Street residents. People are worried about the safety and want the closure back. In the past, the closure made Halloween safe and fun for me and many other kids. I hope the town will consider closing the street and allow trick-or-treating without cars. Thank you for considering this and hope, I hope action will be taken to keep Halloween safe for everyone.
It makes me so happy when I can safely go trick-or-treating with my friends. Seeing all the little kids experience Halloween for the first or second time is so fun. I love checking out my friends and other people's costumes. Closing Summer Street to cars would make trick-or-treating much safer. Please help me make this happen. Thank you.
Norm Archer from forty-seven Summer Street here, just around the corner. And I've been a part of trick-or-treating in one way or another since nineteen seventy-six. So it's, it's a longstanding tradition in the family. And I think, I'm not going to say anything that's going to be more convincing than what, you know, my fellow neighbors have said passionately. What I don't understand is why we're having this conversation tonight. This should have been a conversation a long time ago. And I think, I think the, the win-win for everybody is to close the street this year and then immediately begin, or give us time as a group of people that apparently need to form an organization, like a 501 or something, and then start to work with the town to understand what the costs are and give you the time and space to come up with as many creative ideas as possible. I mean, I, my, my experience in Halloween is as the decorator and how, and candy distributor. So my, you know, my view is out the door. I've, I've had no experience in the last ten years off the street and the other neighborhoods. So I, I totally understand what you're up against and the challenge of, of pulling something like this together. And it was shocking to go down to prelude the last couple of years and to see every single street blocked off with significant, you know, heavy machinery for a lot of reasons that, you know, none of us want to even contemplate. So I, I recognize that. But I think the best way forward is, as I said, just to stick with the policy that's been in place for ten to twelve years. I don't understand what changed between last year and this year. I don't think we're going to get that answer here tonight, but I would encourage someone to make a motion to keep that policy and to close the street and then, again, give us time to come back to you with a plan to, to do something perhaps bigger and better, right? I mean, there's a lot we could do, not just for Summer Street, but for the entire community. People are going to go where they want to go, where they feel most comfortable, right? But I think there's an opportunity to do something significant here if we work together. Let's just do it after this year because there's not enough time to do anything really, in my opinion, based on, you know, your staffing issues and, and the coordination that Chris put together in twenty-three days from now. So, thank you.
Steve Deel, not from Summer Street, but Park Street, the upper part of Park Street, the Summer Street end of Park Street, which seems to have been completely forgotten. The road is, has been closed at the Dane Street junction for the last five years, to my certain knowledge, and probably well before that. That's very important because the Chambers event, and I, incidentally, that reminds me, quite why was the Chamber having anything to do with Summer Street? It's absolutely none of their business. But to return to the other point, people flood across Parsons Field from the Waterhouse Center, cross Dane Street, there is a crossing there. It's actually going to be a bit more difficult this year because of the enhancements to the little, the junior baseball field. There are fences now that weren't there, so it's going to compress foot traffic. And they flood up Park Street, which is fine if it's closed. It ain't so good if there's traffic coming down there. It's very difficult to see on Park Street. There's no street lighting to speak of, the sidewalk's in appalling condition, it's very narrow. That's going to be dangerous. Couple of other things that come to mind, some old sayings. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. And when you propose new deals, I'm an engineer by origin, when you propose a new design, you always have to review your assumptions. And one of the things that I would query wholeheartedly about Chris's work is his assumption that people will keep moving. They won't. There are lines, we're, as I say, we're on Park Street. We have lines out the driveway from five o'clock, actually about four-thirty typically. And the big houses on Summer Street, there are lines everywhere. There are going to be blockages to this. You're not going to accommodate those moving masses. There's going to be chaos. And what will happen is they will flood into, because it's the only place they can go, they will flood into the designated roadways. And I think Chief McKenzie's decision to close the road would occur within- And I think Chief McKenzie's decision to close the road would occur within half an hour of the event starting, because it will be patently chaos.
Hello, Maggie Barton-Hagan, also not of Summer Street. But I can clearly hear that there are, there is a great amount of concern about this. And I would echo the, one of the gentlemen who spoke right before me, saying that my shock was that this happened so abruptly. I really think that the, and I clearly hear that it's a concern for the town, for very valid reasons. However, if it were done in a way, as the gentleman mentioned, that what remains, or what has happened over the past, happened again this year. In other words, Summer Street stays closed. You have a year then to work on alternatives, which clearly sounds like it is needed because of the crowds and the safety issues. But it was done so abruptly, I truly do not think enough time, you know, there is enough time at this point in time to make this kind of major change for something that's been going on for however many years, 10 years, 13 years. So I would urge the Select Board to consider keeping what has been happening in place this year. And then perhaps involving the community in a discussion rather than abruptly changing something that is clearly precious to this community. Thank you.
My name is Paul Coughlin. I live on Winter Street. My wife and I live on Winter Street. And people aren't going to applaud for me. So we used to live on Summer Street, in the same place that Peter lives now. And that was probably 20 years ago. We saw an awful lot of foot traffic. It was, I thought it worked out pretty well. And I really think you folks have done a great job. Chief McKenzie, I think you do a great job. Chris, you do a great job. You're new, but I think you're doing a great job. So I really think the plan you've put together for what you want to do on Halloween, what you're suggesting we do to keep people safe, I trust you. And I'm also here to say, Winter Street has suffered from, our Halloween experience has suffered greatly in the past few years, because when you shut down Summer Street, people are in a hurry to get to wherever they're going, and they race down Winter Street, and it's dark, and there's kids running back and forth, because we also have sidewalk on just one side of the street. And it scares me. And so our experience has suffered a lot, and I was really happy when I heard what you were planning to do. I understand where people are saying, oh, give us one more year, and then we'll work on it. I think you should try your plan this year, and then work with the local people and say, hey, that's what we could do, can we do it better? Can we go back to what you folks want us to do? So, nobody's going to applaud, I just wanted to say thank you for the time you've put into this. And please have the courage to like, do what you think is right, not what people are going to applaud for.
Good evening, my name is Roger Wood, and I live at 26 Summer Street. I think Halloween is a remarkable asset for the town. I think it's something that truly differentiates this town and this community from many others in the state of Maine and the state of New England. And I also think it's important to note that it is not an organized event. I think it's developed organically, and I think that's a testament to the many residents who've made it come together over the years. This evening, I've heard four main reasons why we think there's a problem. Let me take those one by one. Firstly, safety. I really struggle to understand the universe in which it is safer to keep the road open than to close the road. I really struggle with that concept. Number two is cost. I think the discussion we heard from Chris about channelizing, this discussion we heard from Chief McKenzie about having officers on duty and supervising crosswalks and so on, that to me sounds like we're going to have at least as much cost involved in keeping the road open as closing the road. So I'm really struggling with that one as well. Number three is inconvenience for the residents. Again, you've heard from a lot of previous speakers that the overwhelming majority of residents approve of keeping the road closed, as it has been in recent years. And for the very small number of residents who may have expressed concerns, who may have had some inconvenience about not being able to access their homes during three hours that the road is closed, again, I would suggest that people can plan around that. And I think three hours in the course of a year is very little to ask in terms of some minor inconvenience. The fourth one I heard, which really surprised me a lot, is that it's a problem that we have out-of-town visitors coming here. It's a problem that this event has grown. To me, I think that these are indications of huge success. I think they are things that the community and the town should be proud of. So I would like to reiterate what a few previous speakers have said. I would suggest that in 23 days from now, it makes way more sense to keep the street closed, as it has been in prior years. And in order to address some of the issues around public safety, perhaps some of the issues around growth, then let us spend the next year figuring out what those are with involvement from the community, and in particular, from the residents of Summer Street.
Hey, good evening, Shiloh Schulte, lower Park Street, not upper Park Street. The park that stays open. Marion, my respect, I heard what you said earlier about not repeating things before. I've sat there and said the same thing. So trying to quickly edit down. Two things, I think. I agree with most of the speakers, with all due respect to my neighbor Paul, who I like very much. I think, and he does an amazing job decorating his house. I was going to say that those neighborhoods that are in the surrounding areas, that are out further afield, that maybe have seen a drop-off in trick-or-treaters, should look at this not as Summer Street is taking our trick-or-treaters away, but it's a challenge. Organize your neighborhood, decorate the house like Paul and Terry do, and like the Summer Street houses do, like we do, and get the kids to want to be a stay in your neighborhood. Take it as an opportunity to make more neighborhoods doing what Summer Street did 20, 30 years ago, and make it a place that trick-or-treaters want to come. That's one thing. But the other thing I did want to say, that I appreciate your comments, Chief, on the lack of vandalism. Every year, we leave our pumpkins out, hoping somebody will come and take them away and get rid of them. And it doesn't happen. And it's probably because of events like Summer Street, where kids, right up until the time they leave for college, I know my kids did that, will go and trick-or-treat, and their friends do that right through high school. Because you can go somewhere where it's, you can be maybe a little bit away from your parents, and you can go and have a fun thing, where lots of people are going of all ages and experiencing this event. The idea, the idea that, you know, if you're looking at this as we've got 6,000 people here, and there's no control over it, and it's a problem, there are solutions that have been put forward, makes sense, if you're looking at it that perspective. If you're looking at it as we have something organic and unique and growing, which creates growing pains, 100%, I don't deny anything that you guys have said to be correct. But looking at this as this is an opportunity for the town, one that really has to be managed and is going to require resources, that you recognize that's going to be over time, it's going to be additional budgetary concerns and so forth. But when you have 6,000 people, or whatever the actual number is, 8, 3,000, lots of thousands thrown out, whatever the actual number is, it's incredibly popular. It's a really valuable piece of the experience of living in this town, and it makes it unique. We should be supporting that successfully and safely. I would bet, I mean, as others have said, like, you know, your use of your department this year is likely going to be at or increased staffing levels to deal with the change, because it's a new change. But if you're successful in what you've stated goal of making the experience, and I'm not being facetious, or making the experience worse so fewer people come, then eventually you would have fewer staff that would have to be there. But for this year, you won't. But the idea that we'd go forward and make the experience deliberately worse, so people go elsewhere, is, just strikes me as baffling. I would never support that. I think the, I think the idea that you can, you have a plan in place for the previous, what you've done in previous years, it's not perfect. You could get it, you could implement it. You'll have to implement it on the fly, within an hour of opening, of 5 o'clock. And then you're going to have to be pulling people in randomly that weren't necessarily, I mean, you know all the challenges associated with that. I think we should support the departments that are putting, that are out there, doing the work to, to make this safe, and staff them appropriately, provide the funds appropriate, the planning, all the things that are necessary to make Summer Street successful.
Hello, Chris McLynchy, 50 Summer Street. I've spoken to you a number of times before. I'll try to keep my comments to new topics for the most part. I think what you've heard a lot so far from our communications directly to you, and from the residents that you've heard from, is just how, how special the event of Halloween on Summer Street is. You know, and how unique it is to this area, and really to New England, you know, again, outside of Salem. I don't think you'll find a more, a city, a town embraces this more than Kennybunk does. I mean, with its stately ship captain homes that they, you know, transfer into creepy haunted houses at night. It's, it's just been a really popular spot for decades. And 10 years ago, the town really leaned into this tradition by closing the street to cars. I, I reached out to Barry Tibbetts, Town Manager, who was here when they decided to close the road. I asked him his thoughts, why did you guys do it? And what are your thoughts about the change? And he said, quote, "First, you know, we did it for the safety of the kids. Too many cars and families were just crossing everywhere. And secondly, it was a great community builder. The kind of event that kids and families remember forever, which is a great way to build community identity." You know, ask, he goes, "Ask yourself, what do you remember from your youth?" You know, big snowbanks, baseball fields, ice cream trucks coming down the road in your neighborhood. You know, this event is one of a collection of community events that builds the town's character. He goes on to say that taking away this event, in his opinion, is eroding that community identity. And so, I mean, I think it was clear from the start that the town, when this started, the town was looking to embrace and make this a safe community event. And again, one that grew organically, and that is not really organized to any particular degree from the residents. You know, some years there's more people, some years there's less, because of the days of the week, because of the weather. You know, it's all kind of a crapshoot. But the point being is that the town, I think, should really lean into making this event as safe as possible, and really just embracing the community aspect of it. I mean, why do we do events like May Day and Harvest Fest? We do those events to help build that sense of community and get people together in fun and in fun ways. And, you know, this event predates all of those things, and has clearly been here longer. And I think it does justice, good a job. One thing I'd like to note is that Halloween nationally has really become an increasingly popular holiday. They're spending a lot more money on Halloween these years. I mean, look at all the Spirit Halloween shops that are up like every other town in Maine. Like, it's, it's really become a big thing. But on the flip side, trick-or-treating as an activity on Halloween has really evolved. And for a number of reasons. It's, people don't get to know their neighbors like they used to. You know, people are, you know, are in neighborhoods, and they move around, and they just don't know who's around them. And so they, parents are less comfortable letting their children run around in places that they're not very, you know, where they don't know who's, who's there. Or whose houses they're knocking on their doors, and that sort of thing. And one of the other reasons that it's evolved is because there's been more organized activities in towns across New England and across America. There's trunk-or-treat events, and, you know, people want to take their kids to places that they feel safe and that they are comfortable with, and that they know will be a fun event versus just running around town and hoping to find some doors that people will give them some candy. This is something that obviously we've been doing for over 10 years now, and I think it's been really successful. So I'd just like to say that, like it or not, Halloween is one of Kennybunk's signature events. You ask anybody in Southern Maine, what comes to mind when you think of Kennybunk? And I bet you Halloween is one of the top three things they talk about. It's the beaches, it's the flowers on Main Street, and it's going to be Halloween. People really enjoy it. Just a couple more comments, I'm sorry. There's a bunch of programming that's come along to kind of build off the popularity of this event. Brickstore Museum does a bunch of walking tours, the All Souls Walk. They just did a séance last weekend, really embracing kind of the spooky Halloween vibe that Kennybunk puts out there. Chambers started their business trick-or-treating event to build off of all the people that were coming down to our event. So I guess now that, I'm just in closing, the ball is in your court. We're asking you to direct the Town Manager to reverse course on this, and to work in good faith with us, the neighbors and the residents, so that we can begin planning next year's event. I mean, I truly believe that a partnership between the town and the neighborhood is really the best solution going forward. And with some patience and creativity, I think we can work through any of the logistical challenges that we seem to are coming up against. So, thank you so much.
Marion, if I may.
Go ahead.
I think we all probably want to. So I just want to start by saying thank you, everyone, for coming. We appreciate the support. You guys are not in our email boxes. There are a lot of people that have been emailing us on both sides of this issue, just like every issue we deal with. Totally appreciate and love the engagement. I want to start by saying, I do not have a problem with people coming here. Half the people in this room have come here, and I love that more than anything, which is how things begin. So please do not take one statement and run with it and boo me. We, our job is to try and maintain the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And that is more than just sometimes a couple dozen people's opinion in a room. And I don't mean that disrespectfully. I'm saying that, no, no. Thank you.
Let's try to be respectful. We listen to you.
Thank you. We've listened to this for weeks. We're trying to gather the information of the staff that we are putting these seats to be able to provide safety for you and the rest of the community, not just one road. We have to gather information. I grew up here. I've trick-or-treated on Summer Street my whole life. I understand where it's come from. We all understand the experience of Summer Street. We all love it, or we don't. We all choose where we go. I go to Summer Street every year. So please do not disrespect me. I go to Summer Street every year. The people that are going to protect me, and all of you, and everyone else that's not here tonight, we need to trust them and the decisions that they give us if this is not working. We understand and we hear you that you want us to embrace this event. We get that. But booing us and yelling at us is not going to be the way to work together. The Select Board was not involved in this decision from the get-go. I announced that last week. So we're trying to gather information from you, and from the people who are going to be protecting all of us. You see the headlines. We are lucky that that's not our town, right? If an event gets so out of control that we have not prepared accordingly, we could be another headline. And it's not just one kid getting hit by a car, because that could happen on Sea Road or on Main Street, when Summer Street is where all of our officers are. That's all we're trying to understand, is where we are now and where we go next. We understand that you're upset about it. But you have to understand, we get upset when everyone's not happy, and there's no pleasing everyone in any community. So we have to gather facts first. The facts that were laid out to you and the facts that were laid out to us have been complicated. We get that. You, we are in a tough seat here too. So we're trying to make the best decision here. All I am trying to understand from my perspective is, I agree about shutting the road this year, but there has to be acknowledgement that if we just turn on this, there'll be a way to do it again next year. Let's just shut it down. There has to be a way forward. What that looks like, none of us at this table were involved in that decision 10 years ago. Maybe Bill. I don't know. But none of us, we, we weren't in these seats. What Halloween was as a safe community event 10 years ago, that Mr. McLynchy mentioned, was a safe community event 10 years ago. This has become a regional event now that no one has stepped up to sponsor. And even if it is a half dozen neighbors that do write to us and maybe aren't at the podium upset, we have to listen to them. It is their road. There are other neighborhoods, we have dozens of emails. Please keep the road open so people will come back to my house. You guys aren't facing those emails. You guys aren't facing those emails. And I'm just stating that I understand when you're passionate about something. I love fireworks. The town wanted to shut them down. I fought. I was one of one to fight for them, okay? I get it. But my point is, you're not the only road. This is not the only place to trick or treat. These are not the only taxpayers. These are, like, this is our resources. You are one road, and people are upset. I'm still going to go to Summer Street whether it's closed or it isn't. Other people are, too. We get that it might not be safe, but we're totally discounting and forgetting every other road that has no attention during that time. And if we encourage other neighborhoods to decorate and become this big thing, are we going to start shutting all the roads down? We just have to decide what we want it to be, and I agree about sitting together with all of the Summer Street neighbors that want to be involved in making a decision, not in multiple groups. There's too many chefs in the kitchen. We're hearing too many facts and too many sides from too many places. We need to sit down, have a discussion. I agree that it starts November 1st for next year, but you have to realize, May happened, May Day Parade happened. Heather has to make a decision with our staff and with incidents that take place, and they did the best they could, and we are just trying to understand and mitigate that. So, I'm sorry for taking the mic, but it is very difficult to just be pinned as a fun sucker when we are not. We might all want to be there and have it closed, but that might not be the best decision for the town, and that is our job, whether we like it or not. So, I'm sorry. You don't have to clap for me. I hope we can make this work, and I appreciate you all coming out.
Thank you, Courtney.
Sorry, one more. Aaron Berlin, 31th Summer Street. I think the biggest thing is the contradiction of terms. It was, there are too many people coming to Summer Street. They're from out of town. But at the same time, everybody in town is going to Summer Street, so there's no one in any of the other neighborhoods. It's, the residents don't want to do it, but the residents do want to do it. It's, MDOT wants to close the road, but MDOT doesn't, sorry, MDOT wants the road open, but MDOT hasn't changed their rules. So, I think it's the communication and the way that this is handled has led to a lot of this. It was a random post on a Facebook page, they got picked up by the news media, that said that Summer Street was going to be closed. There still hasn't even been an article in our local town paper telling people that Summer Street is closed. It was picked up by the Portland Herald, it was picked up by Seacoast Online, but there has been no communication in town. We're talking about a 20-some-odd-day communication plan for the new traffic, for the new traffic, but we haven't communicated the Summer Street's going to be open in a broad sense. It's all been organic. So, you're still going to have large crowds from our town coming onto Summer Street. So, I think that really what it is, is it is the contradiction. It is, everything that was laid out, everything that's been reported in the media is contradicted to what happens in these meetings and to the communication that we have from the people here and on the back end from the emails that are going back and forth. And I think that's what needs to be fixed in order for this community and for this event to be successful in the future. And again, the end of August, for a Halloween event, like, there's not enough time to even communicate that out and have that be safe to reduce the number of crowds, if that, the amount of crowds, if that truly is what the goal is. And I think that's where a lot of us struggle, is what is the problem that is trying to be solved? Because we've heard four or five different problems. They seem to be in conflict with each other sometimes. We've heard that it's a resource problem, but we're going to end up probably putting more resources in to preparing the public and preparing the road for the new traffic change than if we just closed the road and had the same staff that was there last year or a little bit more. So, I think it's, there's, that's where we're sort of getting into this friction, is that we don't know what the problem is that we're trying to solve for, and a lot of the explanations are contradictory to the other statements that have been made, and then the next statement comes out, and then the next statement comes out, and that's where we're struggling. And my timer didn't start, so I'll stop now.
I just want to say that the reason we're having this conversation, which we were not obligated to have, is to try to resolve the confusion. That's why we're here tonight.
Understood, but it's, again, it's 20 days before Halloween, as opposed to having the conversation in August when the decision was made. I think that's, again, that's the concern.
Well, as I said, the decision was made, or we've all said, the decision was made not by the select board, so we're trying to address the communication problems that have happened since. Pardon? The town manager and the town staff, police and fire and town hall staff.
Yeah, I just wanted to add my thoughts here. It comes down to the safety, and safety of the kids on Halloween night. That's why I asked my question before. And with the time that we have, and regardless of the communication and how that's gone, Facebook, probably not your best source of information. I've heard all kinds of different things, too. I don't know how many of them are true. But I do know that we're at a point where we are only, you know, 23 days from Halloween. I know we're not going to solve this issue between here and there, and the safest solution for the next Halloween, end of this month, is that we close the road. But that cannot be, that cannot be where we are one year from now. Can't be in the corner, looking at 23 days to Halloween with no solution in place, no responsible party. It's right, somebody made a comment, "The Chamber announced the road being opened." The Chamber, not the town, not the select board, nobody else. It's really just not communicated well, it's not owned by anybody. It needs to be. So, by this time next year, we'll have a good plan in place, the town, the residents of Summer Street, the rest of the towns that are impacted, you know, whether it's, I don't know, other parts of downtown, other parts of West Kinnibunk, other parts of Lower Village, all needs to be considered in their impact. It's not just the safety of Summer Street, it'll be the safety of the town, and that needs to be in consideration, whether that's additional resources, which are not funded. There is no select board contingency that can be used. There's no other funds that are listed for this. It's coming out of the operational budget. These two things all have to be considered over the next year so that we're in a position to have a good solution in place. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to close Summer Street for Halloween this year, as it had been in previous years. I don't have all the streets to write down right now. I can't say if it's 5:00 to 8:30 or 5:30 to 8:00, but if we can get the times that we did last year and the streets that were closed last year, if we can pass that motion, then we can take it forward, I think. So, I make that motion. If I can get a second.
I'll say. We need to have a lot more discussion before we're ready to.
We have the motion on the table, and then we can have discussion, right? Thanks.
Go ahead.
Okay, just to put my thoughts out there, and I think this will, anyway, make my thought on the motion clear. First, to address the Chamber being involved, the Chamber was helping for years run a candy drive to collect candy for those handing out candy on Summer Street. So, they've been trying to help with this as well for years from the, from the outside. I don't feel that I, as a board member, can claim to know more about our public safety needs and nuances with an event like this, more than our public safety professionals and other trained town staff. So, I will be backing the town staff's decision to, for what they decided to do in August. I am sorry to hear that there was no group of neighbors that were willing to fill out a special permit, a special event form at that point and go that route.
Let's be respectful.
I personally don't see this as making Halloween worse.
Leslie, Leslie, hang on one second. This board listened to everything you said without interrupting or making comments. Please show these speakers the same respect.
I personally don't see this as making Halloween worse. I think it's opening it back up to the rest of the neighborhoods in town. And we, as a town, cannot continue to fund one neighborhood's block party, and one neighborhood does not own Halloween. One person mentioned how people don't get to know their neighbors like they used to. When we moved to the neighborhood that we live in now, we took the opportunity on Halloween prior to our closing to go trick or treating on our street, knock on the doors, and introduce ourselves to the neighbors. One could argue that Halloween could be used as a way to get to know your neighbors. I will be backing our town staff.
Go ahead.
I will be backing the town staff as well. I believe that they are called Public Safety Officers for a reason, and that they are familiar with all the problems that have, that have come up over the course of the last few years, and I think that they have expertise in coming up with an answer for some of the problems that they've, that they've seen. This isn't a, this isn't a final decision. Those are, as far as the chief has said, he said that there, it is still possible that the street will be closed down, and I think that this is a good compromise, and we should be looking into it. I am concerned about other places, other areas of town that might need public safety officers over the, on Halloween night. There have been two street takeovers in our area of Maine in the last two months, and I would hate to see something like a group of, a big, a large group of kids coming in and shooting off fireworks and popping donuts over in West Cay, over by the Blueberry Plains at this time of the year when it's so dry. I, I'm concerned about all of those, about all of the town. I think that we have to be concerned, we have to look at that. Also, I am happy to discuss with any group of people that wants to start the, this entity that is, that will be the sponsor next year, but it does need to start as of November 1st. And that, I would, if you're going to put a motion out to change it, I think that that needs to go on as an amendment to it.
I have a lot of thoughts, but last meeting, someone mentioned that we don't have children, and so we don't understand. I have children. Kevin's got kids. Leslie's got kids. Courtney is about to have a kid. Well, yes, and you've got kids, too. We've all, we all have kids. We all have experienced Summer Street. My kids are still young enough to experience Summer Street. But you know what? I've told them that things are going to be different this year, and that's okay because things change, and Summer Street has gotten too big. No one here has stepped up to take out the permit. Any other street in town that we shut down with police has to take out a permit. The town itself takes out a permit when we shut down the street for parades that you all enjoy. No one has stepped up to take out that permit and be the point person. There is no point person during Summer Street Halloween. And if something were to happen, who do we go to? No one has stepped up to be that person. We are more than happy to shut down Summer Street or any other street in town that wants to trick or treat if someone's going to step up and be in charge. And that's where I really have an issue, that no one, everyone's complaining, but no one's being a helper. No one's stepping up to help solve the problem. And so, like Leslie said, I am in no place to say that, you know, that someone who's part of public safety, that I know better than them. And so, I am going to support what town staff thinks, because you know what? As Chief Cooper said, if we can't retain staff when there truly is an emergency in town because they've left us, because they've had to have mandatory overtime for Halloween, I think that that's really unreasonable.
Norm, we have a motion on the table, so we have to finish our discussion.
Understood.
So, a lot of things to address. Several people have asked, you know, what has changed? Why are we making this change? The biggest change is the volume of people. 10 years ago, when Barry Tibbetts agreed to close the street, it was a fraction of the number of people. It was truly a small town event. It's, it's no longer that. So, we have to make adjustments. We have to cope with that change, and police and fire and rescue are telling us that they're having problems dealing with a volume like that. Someone also asked about, why isn't this, why did we take it out of the budget? It has never been in the budget. It is not a town event. And we've been asked in emails to make it a town event, and I have to say, tax season right now, we get tons of emails from residents who are on fixed incomes, who are begging us to try to keep next year's budget flat. That's a pretty much impossible ask, but when we sit down at budget season and we look at, how can we save money? How can we try to protect these residents who are struggling? Looking at new expenses becomes very problematic, and I personally, and I'm just speaking for myself, I would have a hard time justifying spending money on Halloween and adding to the budget for that. I don't, I can't justify that. It's a great, it's fun, et cetera, et cetera, but it's not a need that would justify adding to people's taxes. And lastly, well, not lastly, many of the board members have talked about the fact that we are responsible for the whole town. We have to look at these safety issues, and we have to make a decision based on the input we receive from the people who are responsible for our safety, as others have said. And we can't make a decision just based on residents' opinions when it comes to safety. That's not logical, that's not responsible. I just want to review my notes. Oh, and lastly, we've also received a lot of emails from, from folks who live in other neighborhoods who have told us that they regret that they've lost their kids, their neighborhood kids, to Summer Street, and that they would like to revitalize their own neighborhoods. And yes, they could amp it up and try to make it more fun, but anybody who's had kids will tell you that if your kid goes to school and they hear that all the other kids are going to Summer Street, that's where they're going to want to go, period. And, and that's a reality. That is a reality. So, but as, as others have said here tonight, we have a responsibility to the whole town. We have to consider everybody's needs, everybody's opinions, but in terms of the safety issues, I don't think it's opinions that we have to weigh the most heavily, I think, of citizens. I think we have to weigh the opinions and the input that we're getting from police and fire.
Yes, I want to jump back in there. I'm sorry if I misunderstood before, Chief, but I thought we talked about, when I asked, what would be the safest way to manage this Halloween? I thought it was clear that closing the street is the safest for this Halloween, maybe not in future years. Did I misunderstand that?
I would say it's safer for Summer Street itself
Okay.
to shut that down. But I still have concerns outside of Summer Street, and we're going to have to add resources there.
Right, and no different than previous years on the extra risk outside of Summer Street.
It's just getting more and more.
It's just getting more and more, but it's incremental. It's probably not dramatic shift from previous years.
Last few years.
So on the safety side, that's what I understood. That's why I made the proposal that I did. It also sounded like, and I can hear my colleagues here make some comments, and I would ask if there is a chance they might want to make an amendment to the motion that was brought forward that would make that more amenable to the rest of the select board. Perhaps an amendment for whether a permit might be pulled, that that would allow for us to, for it to close Summer Street, or make it, sorry, conditional on a permit, or conditional that work begin on next year's plan for Halloween, and pick a date, whether it's no later than Jan. 1/25, or whatever date we want to pick. But something that makes this amenable to the rest of the group on maybe finding a way forward here. So those are my thoughts. If you have, those that made those comments, if you want to make an amendment or not, I'll put that out there.
Chief, I do have one question first, and part of the reason why I seconded this motion was, I guess, and I can't, I don't know your job any better than any of the rest of us do, but I guess the question I have to ask is, when you talk about putting those barriers up and doing construction, or some kind of temporary setup to make, to allow traffic to flow, you're adding quite a few people to create crosswalks at various places. Because at some point, someone's going to step out and put a sign up telling the drivers to stop so that the kids can cross. So there's going to be a lot of bottlenecking going on with that. And I would also concern, my other concern about that was, if, let's say, you reached a point, as you said, there may be a threshold where you may be forced to close the road at that scenario, then now, because the road was considered to be opened, then would we have a bottleneck on either side of the, on either side of that? You don't believe so? I'm just, I'm asking, I don't know.
As far as vehicular traffic, no. We would close off the streets at the same locations where we have closed them off in the past, and we'd be prepared to do that, you know, at moments' notice. And what was the other question? I think you may have had one.
Oh, I was, yeah, I was concerned about, I mean, so you, okay, so the main concern, I guess I thought that I was addressing was that at several points along Summer Street, you're going to have to create crosswalks, which will mean, which will mean an officer, each one of them, or a volunteer, somebody to be a flag person, basically, just as we used to have a flag person at the high school. We'd have to have, we'd have to have several instances of flag people to allow those kids to cross, otherwise the cars will go 15 miles an hour. They may see somebody in a black costume and suddenly stop, but I was concerned about that.
Okay. So as a stance now, we would have the same amount this year to keep traffic open that we have in previous years, but the addition would be at the crosswalks to have volunteers at those locations to help with getting pedestrians across the street safely and stop the cars.
I just wanted to say, so this would be a transition year. So we are trying to shift to a new way of thinking. And so, yes, there would be resources still expended.
Yes.
But we're trying to shift. And so the town is being reasonable and helping with doing that.
I would be open to Kevin's suggestion of an amendment, depending on what that is. Chief, if, I agree, this year's a transition year. Any change in plans usually takes three years to go into effect with people getting the broad, you know, story of what's going to happen. I would like to know a date that we're going to discuss and work with the neighborhood and with the town, and see how this year goes. Because, you know, if it's overwhelming that we should get behind this and embrace it, and we really have to sit down and start planning immediately, and if we're not going to, then we're not going to. But, you know, it is too late to make that decision. So is that clear, though, that after this year, we would be, have a plan set up right away for next year, from your perspective of how this year went?
Yes, absolutely.
Safety-wise?
And I second that. I think that, I think that one of the things missing here is that we didn't take a longer view, a longer look at this. I mean, all the years I've been involved here, I've never heard that this was a major crisis until this year, and all of a sudden we're hearing, the amount of people is overwhelming, the amount of, and I'm going, this is the first that this board has heard of this. So, I mean, all of a sudden, we're being told that there's a problem, but we're, we're being told this 30 days before the event. I'd like to be able to digest this a little more, and maybe listen to you guys and say, okay, how do we, how do we make this more, better, better for traffic, for him to be able to get an ambulance down there if somebody on Summer Street had a heart attack during the event? How do we get, you know, how do we, how do we manage these things? Maybe we make it a one-way road instead of a two ways. I mean, I'm just, I'm just tossing out ideas here, but we need to, this needs to be thought of in a more considered, considered period of time, rather than just a sudden...
Yes, go ahead.
I think that that is the reason why you need to have a permit process and an entity that is, that is speaking for the, for the group that's sponsoring an issue, because that's how those plans get put into place. And that's why we're having so much trouble today, and in such short notice. Because there's never been somebody that, never been an entity that, that the town could communicate with. And so, so because there was no entity to communicate with, then there was just an announcement that was made. And so the announcement came out, people got ripped about it, and then they got very organized. So clearly, an entity exists, but it just needs to be more, a little bit more organized than it is, if you, it got very organized for tonight, it needs to be a little bit more organized so that it can help plan for next year. And that's great. It's great that there are so many people here that are so interested in making sure that this is a successful event. But that means that everybody has to try, has to be able to step up and recruit volunteers to be, to be safety volunteers, make sure that people stay on the sidewalk, that people cross in the crosswalks and don't, and don't cross elsewhere. These are, in addition to the volunteers that you obviously recruit to help pass out, pass out candy, it is too big for the town to be able to handle, and we need help. And so that means that volunteers are going to be needed.
Madam Chair?
One more thing. Yeah, one more thing. One other thing that concerns me is that what we've heard very loud and clear here tonight is a desire to keep your street closed. So I have to wonder what's going to miraculously change in a year that's going to make you want to say, okay, next year it'll be open. I, I think that maybe we should look at this as a transition year, where we attempt to try this and then tweak it as necessary. But I guess I have a hard time understanding what, how waving a magic wand is going to change all your opinions on the closure of your road in a year. I don't understand that.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to highlight, I don't know that that's an outcome in a year. You know, if there's an organization that has a chance to, well, organize itself, can raise funds, it can hire security, it doesn't all have to be 100% dependent on the town, that can apply for a permit to close the road. There's a lot of things that could happen in future years that don't necessarily mean that it becomes an open road. So the outcome is not predetermined for next year. It's the process. It's, it's the process that we need to set up and have determined before next year. That's what needs to happen. Thanks.
Miriam, sorry, just real quick to that point, too. I agree with Kevin, and it is a process, and what process that is, I think we need to be part of. But to that point, you know, like I said earlier in my statement, no one at this table made that decision 10 years ago. And the town has the right to say, hey, we did this, which we didn't, but someone before us chose this, and now we, who's in place today and what's happening today, they're not comfortable continuing to do. And that we have to commend for them saying. So, you know, the same could go for you guys, if the majority of the neighborhood was the other way, where you guys said, hey, enough of this. Would you want us to say, hey, sorry, there's four people and tons of towns that love it, so your road's getting shut, and I hope you have candy? You know, we have to look at it both ways. And I'm, I'm not at all pushing against you, but we have to remember that none of us were part of this decision, and the town has the right to say, that was a past decision, and we today choose, we can't do this anymore. We cannot support what this is today any longer. Do we embrace it further? Do we push it further away? We don't know yet, but we have to have that discussion.
I just wanted to say one thing. Well, we're allowed to talk.
That's all right.
It hasn't become a major crisis to, you know, speak to Bill. But I think that our public safety, I have learned, being in this position, does a great job of sheltering from us, from what is really going on behind the scenes, when there are emergencies, when things are happening behind the scenes. You don't know it, and they don't share it, and they're keeping us safe and protected, and that's kind of the bubble we all want to live in. You don't want to know what they see on a daily basis and what they're dealing with. And so I don't want to say that it's not a crisis, but it's become too big, and if the police chief and the fire chief are here concerned about it, then it's become something. Because in the past, they've kept their mouths closed about what's going on. And so I think that's really important to keep in mind.
So Kevin, do you want to amend your motion?
Well, I'm, personally, I'm satisfied with the motion that I put forward. I was asking if there were any, you know, if, understanding where the board is and what I'd heard, I thought there might be some willingness to go along with the motion, and perhaps they could make the amendment that would be acceptable. However, if that's not the case, I'll make the amendment myself. So the motion, as I presented before, with the amendment that there will be a permit pulled in advance of the approval, or conditional on a permit being pulled. How's that?
This year?
In a special event?
The special event for this year. Can we, is that impossible to do?
Yeah. Yeah, not enough time left.
Well, then I can't, I can't make that, I can't make an amendment that meets the requirements
That's why it was all brought up in August initially
No, I agree. Understand. All right, well, then we can't, we can't appease that, we can't appease that.
I thought you were talking about for next year, but...
No, that has to be for next year, too, obviously. But the key for this year, I thought we could maybe get that in. But if there's no way to expedite that process, then there's no way to do that. All right, well, then the only thing that we can make an amendment for is to have work begin no later than January of this next year.
All right. Let me just, let me see if we can clear this up. Bill Reichel, you're back there somewhere. I'm just going to ask you if you think it's possible for a special permit to be pulled and approved at this point for this year?
So the permit application comes to our office, we typically say 45 days to review before an event. It has to go through all departments in town, so it's just going to, would rely on that, on how fast that could turn around. So it's, there's a lot of review on those, especially when you're looking at the pieces that go into, especially road closures, and PD assesses their fees, or their staffing levels, same thing with fire, and, well, something like this, public services as well, so...
And there's an insurance requirement, is that correct?
Correct. So any event in town that's not, requires a certain insurance, name the town as an additional insured for $1 million. So that goes along with all the, any event that goes on in town, on town property, or that requires a road closure.
So, so am I correct in saying it sounds iffy, the possibility of getting it done in time for this year?
I would say, I mean, I don't want to speak for you, Bill, but I think it would be very tight, only because we need to plan this event tomorrow, which direction we're going. So we really do need a decision. Again, I'm not speaking for everybody, but myself, we need a decision tonight on the direction. We can't delay that any longer.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to just let Norm speak, and then we'll, I guess...
Appreciate that. Is that, just a quick question, is that 45 business days or 45 calendar days on the application?
It's not specific.
Right, okay. So it's important to note that, because as you mentioned, Heather, right, we are not an organized group. We have no leader. There's no individual that speaks on behalf of this street, right? There's 26 houses on the street, for the cost of postage and a letter to each of our houses saying, hey, we're going to have a meeting, or to ask our opinion by way of poll. Six months ago, we would have then known that there's a requirement to pull a permit to get organized and to do this. I mean, if I thought it could be done in three weeks, I'd pull the permit myself right now. But it's not possible. I mean, things just don't move that quickly, right? So the notion that we didn't stand up is absolute nonsense, and I think we should apologize for repeating that over and over, because we were never given the opportunity to pull a permit. We didn't know we had to be organized. This has gone on organically for years and years. So to think that we were just going to be able to pop up on the 23rd of August, when the chamber posted this for the world to see, what's the chamber got to do with this? It's a 501(c)(6) organization that is, you know, their vested interest is promoting the business in town. They're not, we didn't elect the chamber. We elected you to represent us. So I just think that language needs to be toned down, because given the opportunity, we will step up, and we will do what's necessary. But we had no time. As evidenced by August 23rd, plus 45 business days, to come up with something? No way. It's not possible.
I don't know if you give me a second, but, I mean, I think it's been pretty clear, we, we're not organized coming into this. But I would say that my wife and I have been a clear point of contact for you guys, representing on many of our emails from the residents of Summer Street. We've been in regular contact with more than half the street about this issue since August. Not once has anybody reached out to us and said, you need to build, you need to pull a permit for this. It wasn't, that was not, that was not an option that was given to us. It was not something that was ever known to be needed, because, you know, the town, this was, it might not be a town sponsored of it, it was a town, like, nobody on the street, there's never been a permit pulled for this traffic enforcement or traffic management scenario. And so we had no idea that a permit was required. We had no idea that that's what you were looking for, that would have been an acceptable solution to this. I would still argue, and I think we would take some time as we organize going forward to try to manage this event, that I still think there is a lot of validity that it's a town partnership with the residents and the town, together working forward on this event, and not just a private street party. That is never what it's been about. And so, anyway, I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified. Thank you.
I just have a very simple question about the permit, and that is whether a permit was required in prior years, and if not, why not?
Yes, a permit was required, and Mr. Tibbetts should have pulled a permit. He set a precedent that unfortunately became part of our culture.
Pardon, I think she meant unfortunately in that it was a precedent that was set that was not following the rules and, and the process, and it was allowed to go on, and unfortunately, it was not tied up sooner.
Thank you, Leslie. Because as I said before, my kids enjoy trick-or-treating. I'm not the Grinch.
All right, I'm going to stop you right there, because I really, I think we need to, we've got a motion on the table, and I think we should take a to, we've got a motion on the table, and I think we should take a vote on it. Is any...
Can we have, like, where we stand on the motion to be, like, restated? I don't know if we got it from the record. Obviously, we can't do the permit being pulled, because that's impossible between now and the end of the month. But we did propose that we would close the street this year.
Here's where it stands. Move to close Summer Street and adjacent streets as last year, for the same time as last year. With the condition further about planning for Halloween, this could be then later in the year.
That's perfectly stated, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments, questions? All right, take a vote. All in favor of Kevin's proposal to close the street this year and plan for next year's event being handled differently? All in favor of that motion? Two. And all opposed? Five, two.
Miriam, could I just make a follow-up motion to that? That is true, correct? I can make a second motion? Just like to, I'd like to make a motion that, like to make a motion that we meet as a board with directors of each department and the neighbors of Summer Street before or shortly after January 1st of this year to have a discussion about how this year went from both perspectives, and see if the safety plans were adequate, and how we should proceed into next year.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
I just, oop. I want to know if that's reasonable with staff. Is that, okay. I don't want to extend, overextend staff.
Yep. All right, all in favor of that motion? Okay. All right, we are moving on to select board comments, starting with subcommittee reports. Does anyone have a subcommittee report? I have a subcommittee report.
Yeah, I believe I was going to say...
I believe you were going to report out on our...
Yes, our...
Ordinance Subcommittee.
Ordinance Subcommittee.
Yes.
We, we continued our work on developing guidelines for contract zones, and we also discussed where we're at with...
Noise.
Septic, oh, we also, yes, we were almost done with our noise ordinance, little final tweaks on that. And we decided to delay septic ordinance review until we have more information that's going to be coming back to us. We also decided to review the beach ordinance with an eye to evaluating enforcement, changing fines possibly, and we've asked the animal control officer to give us a report for the last year of, of any kind of incidents that occurred on the beach. That is it from the ordinance Subcommittee. That door's open. That door's open. Okay. Do we have any other subcommittee reports? All right, liaison reports.
No, go ahead. I was looking to, at Miriam. No, no, no.
All right, Leslie, go.
All right, fine. The community garden committee met, and I just am happy to report that between the West Kennebunk Garden and the Park Street Garden, at that meeting, and I think it's probably surpassed this now, but I don't know the exact number, but at that meeting, it was almost 5,000 pounds of produce that have been donated to either the COS or the community, the food program in Alfred and other area communities. I know they've started work with someone in Bitterford, too. Gosh, almost 5,000 pounds of produce. I am just tickled by it, that is just amazing.
Yes.
And they are planning on, students from the high schools alternative education program are going to be helping them build raised beds for the West Kennebunk Garden, because that's been high in demand for many of the gardeners. And closing dates, sadly, for the gardens are this Saturday, October 12th for West K from 9:00 to 12:00, and October 16th for the Park Street Gardens at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, I was going to report out on the EDC, if that's all right, Karen. If you, anything else that I missed that you want to jump in, please do. We're very lucky, we had a, Stephen made contact with Meredith Richardson, I don't know if you know who that is, but they're the owner of the Lafayette Center, which is an important building in downtown Kennebunk, for discussion on maybe some new partnership or opportunity for dual use of some space. There's a big parking lot, which if you've ever driven across and you're not in an F-250 four-wheel drive, you might find yourself looking for your car at the bottom of a crater that used to be a pothole. So there's a lot of work that's been done there to try to figure out how to, you know, maybe get some use of that space for the town, as well as working with the individuals, try to figure out how we can use some, maybe some TIF funds or something else to redo some of the parking around there. I know there's a lot of work that's got to be done, Chris, there that isn't just getting started, who, getting started with who owns what, and where does the town property end, and where does the, is there a street in the middle of that parking lot? Like, there's a lot of questions that are still out there, so there's some things they got to work on. Second thing we talked about was the contingency fund, use of the 100K that's in the, in the TIF that they had budgeted but has not yet been earmarked for specific projects. A list of those projects was put together, including things like legal fees for a cell tower, and any number of issues, including signage and wayfinding around town. So a lot of projects were brought up, they were highlighted, they're prioritized, and they'll be to us on November 7th, when the EDC and the select board will have a joint meeting. Further discussion on just on the role of the EDC relative to the new, Stephen now part of the town staff, and whether the EDC needs to change its role. But it was decided, of course, that, you know, their role is an important one as a committee, and that they would work in conjunction with Steve and the town staff. So that was sort of the end of the discussion. Anything else I missed, Karen? Not that you remember?
Not that I remember.
Do you recall? All right, thanks.
Bill, did you have anything from the planning board?
I just wanted to say that the newly formed Climate Action Committee has their first meeting on October 16th at 6:30. And we are hoping that we will have some youth join, so if anyone's out there listening and wants to contact us, any high school kiddos, we'd love to have them. And anybody else, too.
Any individual select board comments? Courtney?
Sorry, I got two things. The first, I just wanted to address my comments during last week's individual select board comments. I just wanted to, you know, discuss as a group that, you know, last week I was very put off by the situation, I felt like we were kind of put in the hot seat and kind of, you know, the ones making a decision with so many facts out in the air that we didn't know. Heather and I have discussed this in depth, I feel a lot clearer about things. But to that point, I just wanted to say publicly to the board some feedback I gave Heather, which was, when policies take place or changes take place that are just internal, only impacting staff, I don't feel there's a need for us to know unless there's like a disgruntled staff and HR comes to us or something. But other than that, like, if there's a change that impacts the community, I think this is a testament to the community that we are in. It is unique. You do not see this at other select board meetings, a lot of school board meetings around us, you don't see the outreach that happens here. And anyone who's been here for a long time knows that we have a 99% tax pay rate because people are willing to not even look at the bill, just as long as their kids and their, like, livelihood and experience is what they want. And they don't even know what is on the budget. And I don't mean that in a disrespectful way, a lot of people do engage in that process and maybe do read through it, or Cliff Note it, whatever. But the majority just want to know that this is a happy, safe place to live with cool things going on. And it is really hard to have people come in front of us who are very emotional with mixed facts, and for us to not feel that we are well-guarded, I guess, or informed, informed, to be able to have a conversation with them effectively. And, you know, so for me, I just asked Heather that in the future, when there's a change, like, to the parade policy, or when we do write something, I always am going to support all of you. But for us, it's extremely difficult to have these people bombard us and not have the data. And so all I asked for was in the future for there to be a reading of any significant change that impacts the public so that we can address it properly. I think that Halloween was handled similar to Christmas last year. People point at us, not at them, love you all, but it's the truth. And when we make the wrong decision, you know, then they come for you to change, you know, to try to come after us. It just is a cluster. So trying to keep up with transparency and being ahead of the ball, that was all I was trying to say last week. And so I just wanted to put that out there. The second thing I wanted to note is that on Wednesday, the 16th, Chief Cooper is putting on a little 50-year memorial anniversary for my grandfather, who Central Station is dedicated to. He died in the line of duty as a firefighter here. And I forget what time you decided on, 11? Oh, 1:00? Okay, 1:00 p.m. There you go. 1:00 p.m. at the little park next to the PD, if anyone's interested in going. It would mean a lot to my family.
Oops. Go ahead.
I just wanted to let people know that the Tributary Preserve that the Kennebunk Land Trust owns is opening on 10/13 this Sunday, and there's going to be a big shidoo from 10 to 1:00. And that is the property at the end of Drala Drive. So people know that it has moved forward. Well, I feel like a lot of times, we don't get the result of decisions that we made. And so the trails have been built, the preserve is open, the parking lot's open, and you should go enjoy it.
Brian's going to drop us off in the dump truck.
Well, Brian will be fine.
Can we all get in the back of the dump truck?
Oh, I'm all talked out tonight.
Charter Commission's second program is on Saturday from 10 to 11:00. It's just one hour, but they will extend that if there are, there are people, there were quite a few people the last one. Then the next one's coming up towards the end of the month. I could talk about election stuff, too, if you want to hear it, okay? We, the last two days, we've been in the auditorium from, from 8:00 to 4:30, and we've had about 560 people vote, coupled with about, around 1,500 absences that have been mailed. So we're already almost at the number of people who voted last June, and we're only really two days in, because I only, the ballots finally came at, at 3:00 on last Friday afternoon. So there was a lot of scrambling to get 1,500 ballots ready to be mailed, but, you know, that's what weekends are for, right? But we did it.
Nicely done.
So lots of opportunity for people to vote. We're going to be downstairs in the auditorium from 8:00 to 4:30, right up until the 30th day of October. And then Saturday and Sunday, the 26th and 27th, which is Saturday and Sunday, will be in the auditorium from 8:00 to 4:00. We have probably, not probably, Saturday and Sunday, yep. I'm proud to be the only clerk in Maine that does absentee voting on Sundays, so. And I actually, one year, put it in the church bulletin.
That's why you got that award, Merton.
That's right.
So in the last 10 days, I think we've been having online voter registration, which is new this year. What was new, it's been about a year old. We've been having anywhere from 40 to 50 people a day. So I wouldn't be surprised, by the time it's over, we could be close to probably 11,900 people on the list, where six months ago, it was around 9,400. It's a lot of people. So my fear now is I just hope I have enough ballots, but there's a cure for that, too. It all works out, right? Thank you.
Merton, I just want to tell you and your staff how much we appreciate all this time we've put in. It is a hell of a challenge, and you guys are up to it.
It is, but it's also fun. Yes, thank you.
Okay. So we have, there's a bunch of meetings coming up, our regular meetings, and then some additional meetings. Tax due dates, the first installment is due on Friday, October 11th, 2024, and the second installment is due on Friday, April 12th, 2025. So if you need information, you can call the tax collector's office for the most current information. I want to remind folks, this Saturday is the Residential Household Hazardous Waste Day from 8:00 to 1:00 at the Kennebunk Public Services Facility at 36 C Road. The event is for Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port, and Wells residents. Proof of residency is required, and the gates close at 1:00. So again, I would just remind folks to come early if you're interested in participating, so we can make sure we can take service everyone that, that comes and shows up that day. Saturday, October 12th, is also the Fire Prevention Annual Open House from 9:00 to 2:00 at the West Kennebunk Fire Station. Monday, October 14th, is Indigenous Peoples' Day, so there'll be a closure at Town Office, Department of Public Services, and the transfer station will be closed on Monday. And there are no changes to the trash and recycling schedule, as the collection will take place as usual all week. Thursday, October 17th, is Bouquet at Forward. I know some of you really enjoy that event, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Waterhouse Center, where program, program where volunteers recycle the town's flowers from flower beds at the end of the season. And then lastly, Saturday, October 19th, is Harvest Fest from 8:00 to 2:00, which will be held raid or shine along Main Street at the Waterhouse Center. That's what I have.
October 11th is my birthday.
Yes, yes.
What do you want again?
And Merton...
Tax day.
And Merton mentioned, oops, sorry, and Merton mentioned the Charter Information Center, so sessions, so again, that's this Saturday from 10:00 to 11:00, and Wednesday, October 23rd, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m.
Yes, and I really urge the public to please attend that session and get their questions answered directly from the horse's mouths. Thank you. Can I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Aver.
Aye.